Start.
Thanks.
Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, March eighteenth, Regular City Council Meeting. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, roll call, please.
Dewater. Morris.
Here.
Weir.
Yes.
Smock. Clements.
Present by phone.
Number four is, I'll have a motion to approve the agenda for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number five is public comment. For our big crowd, our big crowd out there.
Don't even have a back table tonight.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna remember the meeting.
If there's no comment, public comment, we'll go ahead and move on to number six, approval of the consent agenda. Take a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven, approval of the resolution calendar. I'll take a motion to approve if all in agreement.
So moved.
Second.
And can I get a roll call? Roll call, please.
Dewater.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Weir.
Yes.
And Clements.
Yes.
Number eight, Resolution sixty-nine forty-four, setting compensation for Chris Even as part-time employee for cleaning of the sewer lines, and that's gonna be part-time and seasonal. Um, and we need to, we had discussed this during budget talks, so we need to have like twenty percent of our lines cleaned each year, um, according to the DNR when we met with them in December. Um, we'd had received a quote, um, from People Services as well, which was, um, like a lot.
Yeah, yeah, this was a much better way to do it.
Yeah, I think so, too. And-
It was my understanding they were gonna be using our equipment anyway.
Uh, yeah, yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we can, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
And we gotta come to the podium and speak.
Yeah.
I just had one question.
Yep.
On the, uh, with, um, Mr. Even, my question is, we have employees that we're paying, that we bought a truck, and they were certified or trained to run that vehicle. And I'd like to know why we're putting another person on duty for thirty-five dollars an hour, when we already are kinda tight on everything, from what I see and everything. And I would just like an explanation of why we're going with the Jessup mayor to come here and do sewer work, when I thought, and I still feel, we got very capable people in the street department that can do this. I'd like to know why we're adding more money on. I know you said seasonal, part-time, we're supposed to do twenty percent of our lines, which is great, we haven't done that since we got the truck, but that's great that we're gonna do it. And I would just like to know the thinking behind, why, why are we having another expense of an employee? There's no benefits on this being part-time, just an hourly rate?
There's not, that is correct.
Can you tell me, how many hours a week do you anticipate he's gonna work?
We think, actually, yes, I can. It's gonna be a hundred and twenty hours a year.
Hundred and twenty hours a year?
That's it.
And he's gonna do this on a yearly contract?
He's gonna, it, it's, we can't hire him as an independent contractor because we're supplying-
Right.
The equipment.
No, I understand that.
Um, so he's gonna do a hundred and twenty hours a year.
Okay. Has he been out here working already? Cause I've seen him spraying, doing lines.
He was doing, um, for Metronet.
Oh, Metronet's what he's working for?
He was working for Metronet.
Oh, okay.
Um, locating our sewer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That was just my question on that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'd move passage of Resolution sixty-nine forty-four.
A second.
Roll call, please, Misty.
Dewater.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Weir.
Yes.
Clements.
Yes.
Number nine, request to install new baseboard at the Community Response Center, an amount of fifteen hundred dollars with Coogler Construction. I just wanna add, this project, like many at the Community Response Center, the consensus is they hadn't been really satisfied with the product, the end product. Um, and I actually met with the contractor again out there. Um, and, you know, we kinda knew that upfront, he didn't know what he was gonna get into, once he got, you know, started, um, grinding. And two, there's kinda some dark, you know, it's kinda dark around the baseboard area. So, um, Justin made the comment that, um, he could see us doing something different.
Well, it's pretty common in most commercial settings, like block wall comes down and you have that exact roll baseboard, mopboard, basically, um, to hide the ugly, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is about twelve inches out. So-
It looks, it looks like, it, it looks unfinished, is what it looks like. You have somewhat of a pattern in the, in the middle of the room, and then about twelve inches out, it's bare.
So this isn't up the wall, this is out on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't been by to see that.
I guess maybe, um, the concrete specialists, maybe you wanna table this until you have a chance to look at it?
Uh, you know, I haven't, I was just wondering about that recently.
Yeah.
And he's been paid, I suppose.
Yeah. But, maybe just a second thought, table it, you go out and look at it, see what, you know, I'd be happy to meet you out there.
Well, yeah, I will, uh, certainly, but, um, my thought would be, I'd call him, you would call him, and say, you, you gotta come back and finish this, and if he wants more money, then we have to talk about it, but, uh-
I, I did call him out.
Yeah.
And talk to him about it.
And what kinda money did he?
No, he just said, this is, this is it. He says, you can't grind it down anymore, then you're gonna start seeing, you know, you're gonna start seeing, you know,
Uneven.
uneven pavement. Uneven flooring.
Yeah, I better look at it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. But I don't really wanna take the expense and do the billboard. I mean, we could approve this, um, contingent to-
Yeah, no use putting the base down until-
Right.
It's resolved. Um, so again, without looking at it, was it that he just couldn't get his big machine close enough to the wall?
Well, he, he didn't indicate that.
Yeah, because, you, you know, I told you, my son and his buddy do it, they have to get the hand grinder out. The big machine only does so much, and then it's all handwork. So-
That's what it looks like to me.
The rest of the floor is perfectly fine?
No.
Essentially, okay.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I think we should table this.
Okay, I'll take a motion, table, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, moving on. Um, I should've actually talked to you before I put it on the agenda. Number ten, request for mayor to authorize payment to Iowa DNR in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, seven seventy-eight oh six, refunding overpayment received for the River Road Water Trails Project. And I, I believe you're all aware of this, the project initially came in at, I think it was like three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, you know, it was, when we got the bid, it was like half that. Um, and then the DNR had asked us last fiscal year, you know, please ask for this money in advance, you know? Um, and we just, so we did. They said, could you ask for ninety percent? Still thinking, cause we hadn't went out to bid yet, still thinking this project was gonna be in the three hundred thousand. So, um, we, you know, all said and done, with all the grants that we had for that project, the city ended up, the city ended up investing about twenty-five thousand, when all said and done. So, and we spent-
Pay back what we didn't use.
Right, we're just paying back what we didn't use. And it was a two, you know, with all the engineering and everything that went on, um, was two hundred and seven thousand, so.
Yeah, and, and they didn't yank it away from us.
And they didn't wait after five years of-
After years.
After five years of waiting.
So, that's a positive thing.
Yeah. So I'll take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Number eleven, um, council to, to consider Community Response Center camera system as budgeted for FY twenty-five. Um, we have Sergeant Newman here, um, who has met, um, with all the different companies, and, uh, to talk about it a little bit. More so to, if, to answer any questions as well.
Yes, I've met with three different companies. Um, one from Hawkeye Communication. The other one from Mainstay. And Electronic Engineering. I think you guys have the quotes.
Yep.
In front of you. Mainstay, Electronic Engineering, and all three of them offered a DVR system. Um, which is what we currently have. I, I think we've had the, over the twenty years, I think it's been twice, we've had to replace that DVR because it's just went down. I mean, we've had that camera system since the building's been built, and technology years, that's beyond ancient, so. We can't even get, we have one camera that's down that we can't even get a replacement part for, and, uh, it's just, it just doesn't work the way it should, currently. Um, so, the difference, Hawkeye Communication also offers a cloud system, which in that, in that sense, you don't have to, uh, get a DVR, so there's no maintenance of a DVR. The other benefit to that is, I'm being told by the rep there, Indiana also talked to him for a bit, um, is, if the city decided to get cameras elsewhere, it would essentially just be, whether it's a street garage, here, a park, wherever, it'd essentially just be a login for us, or anybody to view that, whoever would have access to that. So we wouldn't have to come here and look at your guys' DVR, or go to the street department and look at their DVR. As far as the cameras go, they're, they're all pretty similar.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the megapixel and, and what we're doing, uh, some of our rooms have been repurposed. Uh, we have a weapons room now that's just specifically for weapons, so we would like a camera on that room. Um, our evidence room, also, we'd like a camera in there, stuff that probably wasn't really thought of when the building was built. And, so that's kinda where we're at, and, um, all three of these companies have been very good to work, work with, and I don't have any complaints about any of them, so. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them, or I'll get an answer to you.
Are they all, like, twenty-one cameras?
Yes, it's all, that was the initial issue we had, is when we origi, when we originally came in and had them quote, we didn't really have a plan. And we learned early on that it was not a deal, so I made this, which has all the cameras on it, existing and new, and this is, this is what they worked off of when they came back in, so all the quotes are the same. Now, the reason why some of them may not add a twenty-one cameras, cause some of them are a four-point camera, and they consider that to be one camera. But it's actually four cameras in there, pointing four different directions to cover more area, so.
Well, I, you know, I gotta say, I looked at these bids and it takes a lot of studying to try to figure out comparable bids.
Yeah, tell me about it. I've been working on it for a couple of months.
Yeah.
Trying to get everything is, every company is close as possible to what we are looking for.
So why, um, and I'm not trying to second guess you, but, um, why do some of them specify wiring or not wiring?
Well, that was kind of, uh, so I used to work for my brother who owned a business that does this, actually, yeah. Um, so, and I used to do those, and so, I thought if, if possible, if I could make it work in our schedule, I would do the pull on the wire.
In your spare time?
Not in my spare time.
You have no spare time.
I, I have very little, so it'd have to be during days that I'm working. And, um, but I could get the wire pulled, save a little bit on the labor, that's where the difference is. On that, and I would terminate the ends and stuff, I have all the tools for all that. But, um, the one nice thing I noticed, uh, dealing with this project, is when they built the building, everything is piped in, so it's actually relatively easy to get a wire from one end of that building to the other, so. Yeah, it's one nice thing about it, so. But that's the difference between whether they provide the wire, and they provide the labor to, to do that, or I do it. The only issue with me doing it right now is, we're limited now because we have, um, one right now, just came back, and one's out, and another one's going out, probably in two weeks for eternity leave, so, before I can probably get to it schedule-wise, it, it may be a while, so.
No, I think it's very generous of you to, to offer, but I, I think we definitely need to include the wiring. Have you got a recommendation here?
Um, I like the cloud system, um, especially if the city wants to go with more cameras in other places. I think that frees up having to buy a DVR for each individual building. Um, electronic eng, all, all the companies were great to work with. Um, I think they all, we're gonna, would provide a, a very good product for us. It's, the only difference is, like I said, is that Hawkeye Communication with the cloud system versus a DVR system.
Were they the only, the only company that offered cloud?
Yeah.
Hawkeye?
Yep, the only ones that offered it to me, so.
And I, I did have, you know, uh, I had a moment to talk to Justin before he left, um, cause I ultimately wanted to be, have him be here. Um, he's, this is kind of his thing, one of his things, um, in his line of work. Um, and he, you know, the only thing that he did comment, he said, you know, he felt the DVR system was a better system.
Okay.
Because, once you, once you get in the cloud and you could just see by the expense of it, um, and, yes, do we need cameras at Angels Park, yes. Maybe not so much City Hall, um, cause it's just evidence that we're not here anymore, and you just maybe build a kill-
That's why we want them.
Oh.
We wanna see what the hell is going on.
You want, you wanted to see who actually, you know, killed us, or? It's too late after the fact, but anyway, I'm just being, I'm just being sarcastic. Anyway, it's, we're not the, we're not the police and fire department who absolutely need a system. You know, they have, when they do have guests.
Yep.
You know, they need to-
Yeah, and one of the, one of the things I'll say about all these systems was, one of the requirements is, um, can we separate who has access to the cameras? Cause we don't want anybody, we have people interviewing, in our interview rooms, that the fire department doesn't need to, doesn't need to know about. And even out in the front lobby, sometimes we do interviews out there, so, we, uh, that was one of the requirements that I told them. We gotta be able to limit access to, it can't just be, all fire department has access to our interview rooms or anything going on on our side, so, and they-
And they probably feel the same way.
Yeah, and-
On, on their end.
Yep, and they don't wanna be, they, everyone I've talked to, they're like, yep, we don't wanna be involved in that, cause it's just-
Yeah.
It, it just complicates things, so.
Liability.
Yeah, well, it's illegal.
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, we deal with victims and so forth, that shouldn't be, anybody shouldn't know they're really in there, so.
Yeah.
You, you know, though, um, so we, we bought a fairly inexpensive camera system, I've talked about it before.
Yeah.
At the depot, uh, but that had an option, that you could get storage with that, and these were cheap cameras. And you could, you could pull it up and look at any camera on your phone. And these camera, cameras are, I don't know, like a hundred bucks a piece or something.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm surprised that th, these wouldn't have the same capability.
Yeah, uh, so as far as like pulling it up on your phone and stuff, or?
Both, uh, and, and the option of, uh, cloud storage.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, depending on what system you're talking about, I guess. I mean, I know like the home systems, that are geared more toward homes and not so much for commercial.
Yeah, well, this was a commercial system, but, um, fairly inexpensive, though, was my point. Um, so I don't know, I, I'm surprised that these wouldn't do it. Uh, then the only advantage we saw to it is, our DVR only has about two weeks' storage for six cameras.
Yeah.
So, what kind of storage?
These are, uh, all these, I, I believe are, um, thirty-day storage. On the, before, and it all depends on how much the camera's being used. Like in our evidence room, probably not gonna be used as much, so that might store for ninety days before it rewrites. But the front lobby and the front parking lot, that's, it's gonna be a guaranteed thirty days, but it's probably gonna rewrite after thirty days.
Yeah, but wouldn't there be a situation that you, you would need to archive, like an interview?
Yes, yep, and we do that. We, we have the ability to do that now. Well, no, it's the same system. Generally, what we do with that is, we'll burn that on a disk, and then we enter that in evidence, because then that also shows the county attorney, defense attorneys, that that piece of evidence exists, and therefore they can request that also. So, that's how we, that's how we handle that.
Yeah, so you do it fairly quickly, rather than just keep it-
Yeah, but if something comes up later, and we need to go back and get it, that, I mean, that has happened before, so. Now, a lot of times we use our body cameras in there, too, just to make sure that we're covered, um, so, and that could be because of the system we currently have, too, so.
So, i- if you had to pick a system, which?
Put me on the spot here. I just did the work.
Well, one thing I, one thing I saw as an advantage, among all three of them, was Mainstay Systems is the IT person now-
Correct, yep.
For the police department.
Yep.
So I thought that that would be a nice-
Yeah, they would, uh-
Addition to their service.
Yep, they already do RIT stuff, and we've switched IT companies now a couple of times, but these guys, uh, specialize more in the police. They understand a lot of our other systems that we run, so that's kinda why we went with them. Um, so we're probably gonna stick with them for, for a while. I can't see us going away from them many times soon, but.
So is there any remote access with the DVR system?
That I'm not sure. And it's not that we, it's not that we actually need remote access, we, I, we, I can't really think, and maybe Mike, um, could answer this, but I can't think of a time where I was somewhere else and needed to log into-
Right, well, and I was wondering when Dick was saying it, if, if there may be a, a reason that they don't allow that.
Yeah, yeah, it's-
Because of the sensitivity of it.
Um,
I don't know how much I like the cloud idea, but, I don't know, that's just the old school in me, I guess. Um, but what happens after five years?
With the cloud?
Yeah.
Uh-
It says in the five-year agreement, or up to a five-year agreement.
Then they reprice you for, what, the next five years?
So you basically are going to have a never-ending expense with that associated.
Yep.
Okay. And it's already the, the most expensive option.
But you also don't have the DVR machine.
Those DVRs, um, if you look on those quotes, they're not cheap.
Yeah, nine grand?
Yeah.
But for nine grand, we can replace this one once.
Yeah.
And be here.
Yeah, oh, I understand, I get it. I get it. I get it.
Well, and it's, it's not like, the, um, recordings are lost if the DVR goes down, and you just pull that memory-
Um, probably most cases, yeah. I mean, unless it really crashes, then, then it could be lost. I, we, I don't think we've ever ran into that issue.
Yeah, I, I have not run into it, but-
Yeah.
Do you guys back it up on a daily basis, just out of curiosity?
Do we back it up?
Yeah, or even a weekly basis, it's not backed up at all, does it have the capability of being backed up?
That I don't know.
Okay.
The current one, you mean? Or these, I, I don't know. We, we've never really had an issue.
Okay.
I mean, we've had some issues with it, with it not recording in our interview rooms, but, um, we called Hawkeye Alarm, I think is the one that was taking care of that one, and they were, uh, able to come out and get that fixed up for us, so. Any other questions?
Kinda like the idea of, you know, the IT company-
Idea, too, yeah.
That we already use.
That's Mainstay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sandy, did you have any questions?
No, I, uh, am agreement, I like the, uh, idea of staying with Mainstay.
What did-
All other factors being pretty equal.
Out of curiosity, does anybody have the figure on what we budgeted for?
Thirty thousand.
Okay. Well, this is as close to that as we're gonna get. Appreciate all the good work you put into it.
Yeah, and the time.
Thanks, Ben.
That's a, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
I remember doing it at our store, it was not fun.
Do you wanna take a motion? Do you wanna table? Um, I mean, I think for, Mainstay has been, um, the best quote of all of them. Um, and I like that they're already doing our IT, so.
I wouldn't mind waiting just a, a little bit and get Justin's take on this.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good idea. Has he looked at them at all, or?
Um, he told me if I sent him, he'd be, when he was sitting on the beach in the Caribbean, he would review them, but I didn't hear back, so I'm, I'm thinking that didn't happen. And just, that is really what he said, I real, I'm like, really, Justin, you're on vacation? The only thi, the only reason, um, I put it on, uh, the agenda is, um, Sergeant Newman had stated that there was gonna be a price increase in April, and we don't meet again until April first.
Hmm.
So-
There's the catch.
I have no idea what the, what's he gonna do, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'd definitely like a little more time to think about it.
Okay, I, I'm, you can make a motion to table, I'm totally fine with that. I just had to be completely transparent on that.
Table.
I'll second that, I respect that this is a big pet project of Justin's, and, um, as I feel this would align with his thinking, uh, I think it would be good to have his opinion, and some time for us to, to ponder a little more. Um, so, yeah, I second-
It, it's a big purchase.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number twelve, request to approve the water quality grant, IDAL's contract for the Angels Park Project, and authorize mayor to sign said contract. Pretty much self-explanatory, um, I don't know if you had the opportunity to read through it, it was like I had our city attorney review it, cause it seemed like it had some strong, any language from the state of our, state of Iowa. Pretty much standard.
I would move to approve the water quality grant contract.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thirteen, ordinance seven oh five, approving changes to park regulations in its third reading.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Okay, roll call please.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Motion seven oh five, um, changing park regulations is approved and adopted. Fifteen, request to support the Evansdale Amvets and co-sponsoring a Medal of Honor sign. To be placed on the interstate just before exit seventy in the amount of four hundred dollars. The sign is eight hundred dollars, it is provided by the DOT and installed by the DOT. And that's what they charge for that sign. I do have. Where it would, and I think it was actually exit sixty-eight in between both exits. He dropped off a picture today, if you wanna show them and then we'll pass it on to Donnie. And it's on, it's honoring the three branches, I'm assuming. Excuse me, Army, Navy, Marines.
I was sort of expecting a little more than that, something decorative, maybe in bronze.
Gold-plated, gold-plated trim.
Then you would've had to put another zero on the end. Or a couple of them.
And so this is appropriate for the city to?
Um, we have supported the Amvets in, on projects in the past.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm personally.
Yeah.
But.
And it is, you know, it is representing Evansdale.
Yeah.
As well, I mean, that, you know, we have to be careful. In that process, when it's, um, a city and a, another five oh one C three. But this is also something that all residents of Evansdale would benefit from, that have had people in the service.
Yeah.
So.
But it wouldn't turn out to be an audit finding next year?
No. Cause we're just really paying half the sign, we're not paying it to Evansdale Amvets.
So our portion goes, would go directly to the DOT?
Yeah, yeah. That's what the paperwork said.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Uh, Mayor and Council reports, the only thing I just, just as a reminder, um, as you'd read on our setting the date of the public hearing. For the proposed tax levy, that has to be a separate meeting, the only thing that can be on that meeting agenda is the proposed tax levy. So that will be at five forty-five on April first. And it'll be just a fifteen-minute meeting, open, approve, close, hear the public.
Have you gotten any comments or feedback on the budget?
Mm-mm, no, not at all. And the letters went out to all the residents, so, and again, I am gonna reiterate, um, the state. The way they, the state handled it, they were, um. Forecasting a ten percent increase in the property valuation. So it's, what we were gonna charge is levy rate, which our levy rate stayed the same, it has for the last four years. But they said, just in case the valuations go up on your house, or mine, or yours. They put a ten percent increase on that, so it's figured on a ten percent increase.
Well, I, you know, I personally think the state has gone a little far on all these different requirements, but I gotta admit, I did like that letter that, that I got the other day. Showing the three taxing bodies and the information on that. That information's always available.
Right.
Anybody on your tax bill.
Right.
But, but it was still kind of interesting.
Yeah.
I, I think it, it probably maybe opened anybody's eyes who weren't aware that it, it's not the city that's taking most of your tax money.
Right, yeah, I saw a large increase for, and the other entity this year, which, um, on the bright side of that, they are looking at their budget. They are, you know, they are, um, we all know it's Waterloo schools, cause it's been on the news, they are looking at their budget, they are. There's several positions within, um, the Waterloo school system that they're, they're fading out. So to, um, they had a really big increase on their budget this year, substantial.
Kinda shocking, really.
I was. Yeah, that would be the word I used. So, but I know they are addressing that, I, I, you know, commend, um, um, Superintendent, right, Superintendent Jared. For, for starting to review their budget. For all the cities that are, um, Waterloo and Evansdale, I guess, and just be asked to, but all the cities that are partaking that budget. Counsel?
I, I like the work that, um, that Barry and Justin have been doing, that Jason have been doing on River Road.
It looks nice.
Looks nice.
Thank you, Chris.
Likewise, around the lake, that looks really good.
Yeah, they did a bunch of work, um, on, uh, Myers Lake.
Yeah.
Cause, did you notice that as well? Yeah. Great job, guys.
Can you add, it's just a question, I, I don't know if we can answer that, uh, when can we start looking up to the fiber? Anybody have any idea?
Well, from what I understand, I do kinda have an answer for that, um, and I should've made this announcement. I understand that they're gonna start turning on, um, the fiber that they installed on March twenty-third. And have you signed up, have you called, signed up, you need to call them, cause it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So maybe reach out to them tomorrow, you can Google it on your phone. Just Google it on your phone, MetroNet. Yep.
Are, are they cheaper low on it?
Yes, substantially.
What I've seen, um, we use them at the store.
And, and it's gonna be good service, I mean, it's.
When we first got it, it was a little hiccupy, but they, they got.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be fiber where, uh, Mediacom is coaxial. So, Mediacom, you can have a tendency to lose service five minutes before the show that you've been watching for two hours is over. Which happens to me frequently.
Do you know what they do on, uh, I called them then, cause they completely destroyed my yard on the south side, they had a backhoe in there.
They, they will be back in there, they will be back in there to do everybody's yard.
All at once.
They'll do it all at once.
Okay, I mean, they ruined my side yard that I paid money to have it done and.
Yeah. They will.
Yeah, I was, I was giving it time, hoping that that was the case, yeah, my yard didn't get messed with, but I've seen plenty that have.
Yes. Once, you know, they're done with the installation and weather allowing, of course, then they come back in and do all the yards, so.
Probably a different crew.
Yeah, I think it is probably a different crew, but keep us informed if, if you don't see anything happening. I could reach out to John's story tomorrow too and check and see if they have an ETA, we're not done with the bill yet. Everything east of, uh, the levy on West Gilbert, which is me. They have to get special permission from the Army Corps of Engineers. So everything east of that, it is done in the heights from what I understand, right?
Yeah. They tore my yard, I mean, all two, they had a backhoe in there and I tried, we almost over the neighbor. And I thought, my God, what are they looking for, it's old? Terrible, the guy was, I didn't get outside this morning, the guy was out there walking those areas that were tore up. So maybe he's surveying it and making a report that where you gotta Mediacom back first or second or whatever.
Well, they don't have to dig very deep.
They were, they were, they were down three or four feet in my old yard. Cause I was out there, they had lights at night, late at night when they were doing all the digging.
Must be fifty or sixty of them.
Huh?
Must be fifty or sixty guys, jeez.
Oh, yeah, they got a big crew, they all, they all got their own jobs too.
If council doesn't have anything, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, let me exit.
Alright, let's shut all recordings of the voice off.
Well, you know, I was just wondering what happened to.